Gold Beach, nature's wild side. Have a board meeting at the Oregon coast. Gold Beach. Find out more at visitgoldbeach.com.
All right, so you can all hear me. Let's go ahead and get the meeting started. We're going to have the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's have a roll call, please.
Okay, Larry, you're here. Okay, Anthony, can you hear us?
Anthony Pagano, position three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Becky?
Becky Campbell, position four.
Perfect.
Kami Kaufman, position five.
Great.
Okay, and Counselor Brennan.
Yeah, he's... Larry, you here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good. Just real quickly again, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great.
I can.
Good.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. And welcome, everybody. I know this, once again, is a little bit awkward, but we're going to do the best we possibly can. Bob Chivani is here from the Event Center and wanted to present to us the redevelopment master plan that they have. So Bob, without further ado, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, thank you. I will leave camera off right now. I shaved for no reason. I'm Bob Swante, member of the Curry County Care Board and the Chair of the Master Plan Committee. Just want to make sure to thank the opportunity for the council here to present this to you guys. I think it's very important that you see what's going on. We had earlier things where we had some protect the cost. This is a tightened-up version and a more steroid-type thing that we're doing here. First, I want to make sure to thank our VA fund, Commissioner Pash from the county, who's our county. He has offered his support and input. I also want to say a special thank you to our city VA fund, Summer Madison and Becky Campbell. Their valuable contribution to this process. They've been a great asset for us and the community. And even Becky made sure she gets done and dirty and does her work and tears things down and cleans up for us too. So she's really involved in that. Thank you guys very much. Years of deferred repairs due to lack of funds prevented the Event Center from realizing its potential economic benefit for Gold Beach and all of Curry County. A little history on this, in 2017, Care Board hired Susan Brown, a firm, as a facilitator to meet with us and develop a strategic plan. She interviewed our community partners, tenants, and the public as to what direction they would like to see the Event Center take. This was completed in 2018. Over the last two years, half of this last year probably doesn't really count, but over the last two years, we have had public meetings to address what input the public would like to see that was not involved in those plans. We did, as we had open meetings and special meetings dedicated to the master plan. 2019, we hired Pro Clay Associates. That would be, if everybody has a copy, should send a copy of the master plan. That's the head of the plan there. They could go to a redevelopment master plan, which is what we're presenting to you today. And also just to make note, Caitlin is our care manager. She's on board today too, because I know her name is like a thing, and she's been very helpful with going on and learning what we've done. So she kind of likes a little bit of event, but catching up real quick, because she's doing a fine job for us. So the prices that you'll see inside here, and feel free to have any questions afterwards, based on industry standards, current and recent projects, then these people have done this for a number of years and very qualified business to handle this for us. Quite frankly, so we're looking right now for the future of travel and work vacation, so to speak. It's going to be drastically changed for some time, I think. I don't think if we lost COVID, with declared cure today, for another five to 10 years, people are still not going to be willing to jump on an airplane and go on cruise ships and be in real tight places with people. So it's crucial that we have a facility here to help build this need. A lot of when we speak about work vacations, there's a lot of companies out there who would like to bring their organization, their company down to have a meeting down here, and they can have a vacation at the same time. Back with the Chamber, we've always spoke about and do those about this, about trying to get people to stay one more day. Well, we have a center that is current, modernized, with a smart fee used having the rooms that we need to get done and the infrastructure for them. It's not going to be one day anymore. It might be three, four days, five days, and then they could benefit the entire county. They spread out. They may start here, but we're looking at an event that will attract and benefit the entire county. So just kind of look through this, probably the big thing that sticks out is our RV park. And recently, who have come in, have noticed that there's really a lack of tent camping for people to do in this area. And we had gone back and was, back in the day when travel Oregon was involved, talking about cyclists. Bicycle tourism, oh, it's, well, in 2014, statewide, it was over $400 million industry. I think we were talking about the coast was $400, $500 at the time. There's no real place where they can have a secure place where they can pull over the bike, have a tent, without being on the side of the road to do that. But what we looked at was, in the RV park, was to throw on top of that tent camping first, as a first way to get a foot in the door, to have people come in, to develop, attract those people, offer them opportunity to stay here as they move through to do that. So when you see tent camping RV park, if tent camping is our first stage, second stage, we go into the full-ledge RV park. And that will allow us to actually generate income for the Event Center. It's not just strictly based on event overbuilding at once a month or once a week. Hopefully, it will be more use of. Another thing, what you can do is if you have the map, you have the drawing where we have the layout of this facility.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you'll look on this thing here and, oops, wrong page for me, sorry. One of the things that we're looking at as far as developing tourism is the horse vacation, or the horse tourism to do that. So we have there, where we, in the stall, we're planning to do an additional stable barns where people can, where people can bring their horses to stay, use the RV park, use the tent camping spaces. And then they can camp there and then have those places where they can sit, period, or horse for overnight, and then just ride right up to the beach nude. It's kind of like an underused thing, and it's been actually, a lot of people have asked about that opportunity to do that. So we're trying to look at doing that for. You also see the other, the other biggest of all of them is going to be, look up the front, is the new convention center. The intent is to attach to Doshia, stretch it over, and encompass showcase, showcase for a couple. If they not know that, it's a little building that's on the north end of the lot. We will be removing the forestry building, so we can have a throughway in there. And then over next to OSU, we will develop a two-story building. We'll move either the office and/or watershed or another tenant that we have in there. The end goal on this would be is so we can develop a closed campus situation. Closed campus, since we can have a concert, or we can have a car show, or a road show, or a payout. One of the people we're talking about was bringing construction to come down for the highway. You know, it's safe, we're going to bring load up, we're going to bring down there, and then we're going to have a convention. And then have these things, it's a little bit more safe and easier to have it. If you can have a gated event, you can gate these things, which will allow us to do other things. You also see where we're opening up is the stage and the center. The top of that process here is we move the stage, it's a different direction. We make that an open area where we do pretty much anything. We can have a movie night, we can have a concert. And then when you do, everybody brings their own chairs, they got the paper, have, you know, put in seating. It's not restricted for single use. Another nice thing about having a convention center with meeting rooms, is there's a meeting room can also turn into hospitality suites. Those that's in business understand what hospitality suites, we got to go and bring your big rollers in there to big vendors, and those go up there and they can sit upstairs and watch a concert while they're in the warmth behind the glass, which, you know, that's where the cold will be to this, so. So it should be good. So that is kind of where we're at. We wanted to make sure we shared it with you guys. It's been a great partnership, and it's absolutely, it's one of the things you were first wanting to do, step up. And we do mention it to other places and other parts of the community. There's people in communities that Gold Beach does recognize the value of the Event Center and what it can do. And this is not just a Gold Beach thing, it's to help the entire county. I mean, your heart sits in the middle of your chest, and it runs through the rest of the body. Well, right now, we're at the heart of the county, so we need to make the rest of the county healthy, and we all come in together. This is not just open one location thing. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to hear from you.
Bob, I've got one. You know, everything that you've got proposed here looks very good, and certainly would be a welcome addition. But I was also taking a look at the amount of money that it would take to perform all of these staff. And throughout the entire presentation, and I'm talking about the paper one I'm seeing in front of me, there was never any mention whatsoever as to how the money might be procured. Could you help me with that a little bit?
Yes. Of course, the money is going to be, if we continue to support it, the PLT funds from city and county. It's been very helpful. We actively start to get to use those things, we're trying to make sure we're diligent with it. And as we can repair one roof, get some thing, showcase another roof, decide how to legally showcase, we're doing that. The other option is what we're looking at down the road is to look for community sponsorship. So let's say we have a company, a company would like to sponsor a wing of a building, or a room, or something. You can do that, and you can be the sponsorship, sort of like corporate sponsorship. The other avenue that we're looking at, and that's something that Commissioner Pash is also looking at and trying to do, is bringing corporate sponsorship. So to realize that it's big money, it's hot topic to do that, but a lot of companies, or there's even like the Ford Foundation, they can do something that they understand what it's worth, what it would mean to a community like this and a county like this. So they can help develop, be part of it and take that. So they will be looking for grant funding. So we're not just going to stop with what we can do, because you can't really do that much to get it done. So it is going to be look for public privatized deal grant funding opportunities.
If I might also add this, the additional piece to go with that grant funding is funding through other partnerships as well, such as emergency management. They have access to funding to help build an EOC. If we're looking at a partnership with them, we may be able to get some major repairs or additional building added in through partnerships like that.
Yes, they just came aboard. We just brought up an MOU with them, and they're going to be looking at the park of the OSU and maybe the two-story building. Hopefully, we can get that, but we're talking about putting in an elevator there, which is part of the cost that's on list with. So we can bring it up to ADA status, make that more useful. And they also plan to be there, to offer support during the fair. We have an emergency communication system set up, and we just, they really haven't had an EOC, so we're doing that. So that's one of the partnerships we're talking about, emergency management.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I certainly hope that you're successful with this, because, yeah, I can't help but to help the city and the county at large. So Bob, thank you very much for presenting that. Counsel, do you have anything that you would like to ask either one or two, either one of the two guests that we have?
No, they're quiet. Awesome.
I see Counselor Kaufman has a question. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. One, it looks like parking is an afterthought. When you look at the entire plan, it's not mentioned on the drawing at all. There is a little bit of mention in the verbiage that you might try to acquire property from the high school to provide it, but it looks like you're expanding dramatically and have given no thought to actual parking.
Okay, good question. Actually, part of that issue is we've been working with trying to get our RV park situation set up. With the RV park, there is the problem of the line, you know, the vegetation line, the high water mark and all that. But to get an exact layout of how that's described, we have, which we had that survey that's coming. However, portions of the RV parks will be set up for that, take that into consideration for parking the way of parking down on the south side. Also, you'll see we're removing the office that's currently there, and that will open the space off to the south side. Redesigning the front of it will allow parking in the front, you know how we have it there, and we have the front is all covered with children's events and that's the ride. That will be able, with the lower portion of the thing being re-surfaced and taken care of, we can move that down there. That will provide additional parking up there. So it's also will be set up with the open plan in the center. If we were to have a convention, the thing, parking will be in that open plan, where now all those planters are in the way, blocking everything. Kind of gives you the feeling of a 1970's kitchen where they have the overhead cabinet. You can't do dining. So it makes the challenge with that area would be all enough, so it can provide additional parking throughout the center of the thing, and people will enter the convention center through the west or east side. So the whole thought of this is try to make sure it's flexible and multi-use.
Okay. I don't have a rule or a Sammy square figure looking at, but just the convention center spot, I think you need two different parking spaces. And it doesn't look like they added any, so you might think about that. But my second question is, I know the RV park's been talked about for 30 years or so. The last time it was really seriously discussed, there was a lot of opposition to public paying for something that's going to compete with private. Has that subject come up again, or have you had any pushback, or has that kind of argument died down?
Well, I have not heard any, and we have not, any come up in the, the survey, the community partners discussed about it. The thing of it is, is that throughout the state and throughout the country, fairgrounds and event centers, actually, RV park parking is an integral part of what they provide as a service, and that helps the community. You can quite see right now is that RV space fills up extremely fast, very limited parking. I mean, camping, tent camping, that is there, it's pretty much fast in the summer, so this will offer them another opportunity. So I really think, as what's happened in the past, when people look and say, the economy is terrible, we're not going to have any tourism, what do people do when the economy's bad? They take shorter trips, and they're going to want to come here. If they're not going to be able to fly and cruise, well, I'll get a RV and come to the coast of Gold Beach. So I really think it's going to, it's, there actually is a shortage now, and there won't really be a competition. And there will also be some restrictions on when we can do it, because we also have to take into consideration the fair. That probably be a good part of the month that we won't be using that hard book for the rest of the year. We can have the opportunity to be there. I think what we need to see is that we continue to grow, become a partner, and provide more opportunities for everybody to do that. And we have to find a way to help fund it, so you cannot just fund it on a little amount, $100.
And my last question, and you may want to answer this some other time, but has there been any kind of business plan to go along with the addition to the horse stalls, that you're adding a whole other building? What kind of income that would go, revenue that would bring in, and also with the RV park? And particularly for the RV park, because I'm seeing that a lot of RV parks are converting to housing, and they're not really doing the overnight anymore, as much as they used to. So if you don't have that answer, that's okay, it's just something I'd like to see down the road.
So we actually discuss how we're not there, and it's like that is not what we're there for. We're there to provide opportunities. So if you have a convention coming, they need something. If you have a conference coming, they need someplace to go. As far as the revenues, this COVID, it is a very good revenue generation. And once we get that survey line, we can actually say, all right, we have room for 27 spaces, or we have room for 10 spaces. So to do a cost analysis is kind of a challenge to do right now, when you don't know exactly how many spaces to put in, draw some. As far as the horse barns going on, and even as the possible future acquisition of the track area, because the track has not been used from school for quite some time, down there, the lower track. It, what the master plan, we're trying to look at 10 years down the road, what might be, so the discussion being held today, and people say, why didn't you talk about that later down the road? So it would be nice, the nice part, and I kind of threw in about having the high school track with, a couple of years ago, when we had the fire down here, we lost some local events because the state comes in and the feds come in and take over the fairgrounds, which is how it's set up to where your emergency locations for that, that's what we're open emergency locations for livestock, when we bring livestock to do that. So if we had that facility, we could have extra parking, we can host the event and still have a closed campus toward the fire. It'd be totally different, eliminate impact, anything that's going on, which we're trying to do in the county, and still help the emergency services have a place to be there. So it is a thing that's based on trend what's going on. As soon as we get the survey done for the RV park, then we can have a cost analysis as far as what the income is taking in.
And short story, after the business plan you're asking for, Kami, there isn't one now. Obviously, as we work towards that, the way that these work will, one will be developed. The horse rental likely will fall into the similar plan as what we have going for our horse right now, which is we have contracts in place for a monthly fee. We have a barn manager that helps run rules and play the equipment. So that's kind of where, that one will kind of speed off of what we are passing through.
Quite good. Yes, and then add on to that, this week, we're actually, tomorrow, that we're actually having a little workshop with Caitlin to develop key schedules, and see where that's going, so we can have a more educated answer for you.
Anything further, Counselor? Is there anything further?
No, I'm done.
It looks like Counselor Campbell has...
Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the Care Board. I know that it took a lot of time and effort to come up with that plan. And I'm so glad that the plan's done and you presented it to us. I know it was a lot of hard work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I love your thanking people too. I want to thank you, Counselor Campbell, and Counselor Madison is also on that, and for the work that you guys have been doing. Truly appreciate that.
Yes, they represented city well, and they do a fine job.
I am not surprised to hear that at all. Any other comments? Counselor Brennan, do you have anything you'd like to ask? You're on mute, sir.
Hello?
Yeah, okay, we got you now.
Yeah, I was going to say, and thank you, Bob, for the presentation. It's exciting to see that there's plan being formulated and bringing something into the future. I just, I think it's a good start. Thank you again.
Well, thank you. And I realize it realizes the plan we have planned before, but I think that the board we have in place, the support we're having now, I think it's going to go as well beyond the plan, and it's going to be acted upon.
Yeah. Good job, thank you.
Anyone else? Did we say that Counselor Madison is in attendance?
She is, she's on the phone.
Counselor Madison, would you like to have anything, or would like to add anything?
You know, I just, that the Care Board has come forward and shared, I know they've been working really hard and so far, but I was like, hey, come listen to what's going on. And we just turned right by and I see the Looper Stare and the Rita Board, and the old site coming down, and the new logo. Like, I'm super excited. And they are just rocking and rolling, they've got the right leadership in the office, very proactive board, and a ton of support looking at, I really could be more pleased with the progress. I'm very proud.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, there's much to be proud of. Unless there's anything further, then I want to thank you both so much for your participation here tonight, bringing us all up to date.
Counselor Pagano?
We look forward to keeping you informed as we progress, and I think there needs to be a more ongoing relationship that we actively hear what's going on for the town.
Well, yeah, if I know Counselor Madison and Counselor Campbell, they'll be on top of everything anyway, so, but yeah. Anything at all would be, you know, keeping us up to date, that would be great. But once again, thank you. Thank you both so much.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right. We have a public hearing, and this is the...
Actually, that was a typo, I'm sorry. That was from last one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was looking at that, I was looking through my packet, and I didn't see anything at all concerning it. And I thought, well, maybe I missed something, or...
Yeah, I know, I just realized that, that it was on there, and I was like, yeah, no, that's a typo.
All right.
So now we're on to number seven.
Yeah, great, counsel to public hearing. All right, now we have citizen request agenda items. This is a request to address counsel regarding backyard chicken permit fee, which, whereas it stands now, is $100. We have, let's see, do we have...
I sent a copy of the packet to the gentleman that had emailed both Counselors Kaufman and Campbell, and he did respond, but it doesn't appear that he's on. But that, I put a copy of the email in there, so.
Okay, did everybody see the email and read it? Okay, now, his complaint was that other cities and what have you, that they've been to, have not required a fee as high as ours to have their chickens on their property. I'm assuming the other cities had, well, rules and regulations, much like we do, you know, coops, backyard, that type of thing. But he thought we are a little exorbitant with that $100 fee, and was requesting that we take a look at that again. Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like to weigh in on that? Counselor Kaufman?
Yes, when we first implemented this, I think we based it on at best break even, assuming it was going to take two to three hours per application, because they have to go out and look at it, process the paperwork, and then go out and make sure they did it the way they're supposed to. Is that still true, Administrator Fritz?
Yes, we, the reason why it was assigned at $100 was that's our land use clearing fee. And to be honest, we actually spend less time reviewing a building permit, because we don't, we don't always go out and do a site visit for a building permit application. But for the chicken one, one of the concerns was making sure that it wasn't too close to the neighbor's yard, and that they had the right... to the neighbor's yard, and that they had the right, in the resolution, it has certain things that they're supposed to have, so we go out and verify that. So that was why the council at the time decided on the hundred dollar fee, was that's how much the, like, assigned permit review and a building permit review is.
In your estimation right now, is that hundred dollar fee still appropriate?
Yeah, and that was in 2012, and I, it doesn't cost us more money to do that, but certainly not less, I mean, we do spend time on it. And then if we have complaints, we have to go out and investigate them. And we have had a couple chicken complaints, not on this particular person, but...
Yeah. All right, council, what do you think? The hundred dollar fee is still appropriate to you?
This is a house of a lot of, I think we should keep the hundred dollar fee. We've charged people in the past for it, it's no different now than it was back then for the amount of work. I think it's an appropriate fee to keep.
All right, thank you, Councilor Brennan.
I agree, I think it's appropriate. We're short-staffed anyway, so to spend staff time to often do the inspection and everything, I think that's fair.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, Councilor Madison?
Thank you. So I do have a couple of concerns. I'm curious, the author of the letter says that two cities within Coos County require no fee for their service, or they've reduced it, but I'm curious, how do they pay for those services from the planning perspective and inspection? Do they just not make that happen? I'm curious to know how they can get away with charging nothing.
I'm thinking, just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, continue.
I actually have several on this. My other concern, and I had this question come a while back, some folks are allergic to poultry, and actually look to have a few ducks, and so I'm curious to know, like, ducks are not included in the ordinance. There are much better eggs to bake with, and some folks prefer those when they can't have poultry eggs.
Never asked you a question, never thought about it. I think Administrator, are you through, ma'am? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Sure I'm not. I have several, but if you want me to pause between them, I'm happy to.
No, that's quite all right, you continue on, I apologize.
But I'm also curious to understand why there is a six-foot limit on the height of a chicken coop. Chickens typically choose to roost as high as possible, and the higher up they are, the more, they are safe from fox, scum, raccoon, but I'm wondering if there's some kind of planning issue that requires a six-foot maximum, the height of coop.
Is there anything further, ma'am?
Yes. My other concern is that, has anybody reached out to the 4H leaders, who maybe gave their insight on this? Because I have a feeling that the ordinance was originally drafted by folks that maybe didn't own chickens.
Do you have more, Counselor?
Yeah.
Keep going, because I may have answers to some of it, but I'll wait until you're done.
No, well, yeah, just continue on until you're through.
Okay. So the other thing is, the limit for the count of chickens is four. We're a rural, almost frontier community, and if the limit is four, I'm wondering if maybe we could consider amending that, especially for families that have their parents living with them, or several children. I know that it says that the eggs cannot be raised for commercial, but what is the possibility that they may be able to have a few extra hens that allows them to barter in a community where that might be more acceptable than somewhere more urban?
If I'm not mistaken, our limit is six chickens, isn't it?
Yeah, my opinion is that's six.
All right, no, no, that's fine. Is there anything further?
Yes, one more. So if the cost, which seems high to me, is a hundred dollars, is the person doing the inspections qualified and trained to have the knowledge and the skill set to do so? Because my question is, if it might be more cost-effective to do through code enforcement, who already partners with the health department, they may be able to step in and do that work for us and bring down the cost. But not only that, the code enforcement officer just brought in a software that helps residents register animals, not only because they might need licensing, or help tracking a dog that might be lost, but more importantly, when there is a natural disaster like a wildfire, or something has happened on the property where animals need to be rescued or removed, they can look at this software with an oversight and say, oh, they've also got two goats, six chickens, three dogs. And so they know if they're looking for more livestock, or if they have found what they needed. So I feel like maybe we should consider looking at code enforcement, and seeing if they might be able to help us bring that cost down at all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. You've actually come up with things that, quite honestly, I didn't even consider at all. I know that the Administrator has some answers to at least a few of your questions, so I'm going to go ahead and let her talk right now.
Okay, so, okay, for the other cities, I don't know that the other cities don't charge, so before, I didn't look before the meeting, but I will, I will check with the cities surrounding us, but I don't, I personally don't know of any city that doesn't charge for it, because it is part of, you know, part of some department's duty, whether that's planning or whoever. So I will verify that. And I will check on our definition for livestock, and while we're going through the rest of the meeting, I'll run in my office and grab that real quick. Because we did amend the definition of livestock, and it may actually include ducks, so I'll verify that. Some of the, a few of the other things that you had listed, and Counselor Kaufman can probably verify this as well. When this came up several years back, we actually had several hearings about it, and we got information from a lot of different other cities on how they regulated it, what their guidance was. So most of the information that came out of here was from those, we had at least three meetings about it. And 4H was involved at that time, and I believe the six-foot limit on the coop that came from, if it got too big, then it would get into a building code issue. And so that was, that was why, because we didn't want them to have to get a building permit for something like that. And the chicken, I think it's limited to six with no rooster. And then as far as the code enforcement goes, the county has approached us several times in the last couple of years, and we actually don't, we don't need assistance with code enforcement, we do just fine on our own. And then the one time that I did actually ask for their help on an issue that we don't have code enforcement on, they declined, and so that was a little bit frustrating. So I don't really need help for, the front office doesn't need help on code enforcement for this type of issue, but I appreciate the offer, you know, and wanting to get involved. But when it comes to that, the chickens and other things, I, it's not, I don't really need help from code enforcement. We're not, we're not there. I'm done.
Oh, all right, thank you.
I have one more comment if I may.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I'm not, I'm not really sure that, well, I'll save that later. So in the ordinance that is drafted, or stated, it says the mobile food use, oh, I'm sorry, that's mobile food, never mind, sorry, jump in it. You know, code enforcement has got a lot of software that we might be able to pull some information from, and just because, you know, if we don't need their front office help, and they refuse to do work for us in the past, at some point, I think it's at least worth looking into and saying, is this an option, is this something that might bring the cost down for the community, in which case, then we may need their help. If it brings the cost down by half, when we're registering animals through some other agency that the city is not having to manage, I personally think it's worth looking at.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I think Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I wanted to mention is that, when we did the chicken ordinance, part of the balance was, a lot of people move into town because they don't want livestock near them. So we had to balance the will of somebody that wants to have them, that might live right next door to somebody that absolutely didn't want that next door. So that was part of the balance. And I think, and we kind of did the same thing with the bees, because we did add a bee ordinance, kind of doing the same thing, and that's more recent. I have to look into ducks, but I believe they require water, and that could become a well issue, because the excrement gets into wells, so we'd have to check into that. I had a co-op that had a duck, and it actually put bacteria in their well. So we'd have to look into that, if that would hurt other people, if we were going to add that. So it's a balancing act of trying to make sure that everybody gets what they need. And I, I agree with whatever else has said, that I think the fee is fair, based on the staff time allowed, it doesn't, we don't necessarily want to make any money off of it, but we really don't want to have to subsidize the program either.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pogano, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I don't see, oh, sorry, yes, I do. I think the amount of chickens at six is plenty, I mean, for a city lot, that's quite a few, especially when you can't resell them, they're going to generate quite a few eggs for a family. I also wanted to ask, so with the six-foot high, what is our regulation on fencing? Is our fencing regulated at six feet high, or can you go over that?
That's six foot without getting a building permit. Once you go over six foot, then you're required to get a permit.
Okay, so I think the six foot probably is a good height, because if that's a regular standard fence, then you're probably going to want to keep the neighbors from having to look down over them, especially if they don't like chicken. But, yeah, I, that's all I have to say.
All right, well, council then, yes, go ahead, Ms. Brennan.
Okay, so I did look up the definition, and the, Counselor Madison, ducks are considered livestock, so they are not part of this. So if, if the council wanted to look at making ducks, we would have to amend the definition of the, of what's considered that. Not livestock is domestic cats, dogs, small birds, rodents, insects, serpents, and other small animals normally kept in a dwelling. And then we amended it for this, to say backyard chickens are not considered livestock, provided they are kept consistent with the standards defined in the resolution by the Gold Beach City Council.
All right.
So if they're not kept the way, if they're not kept according to the chicken permit, they actually would be considered livestock.
All right, thank you. Counselor Brennan?
I just had a comment, excuse me. The code enforcement, I think, a city like Uspere, a bigger city, would have code enforcement officers that they already pay to do code enforcement. We don't have that much staff that we could dedicate a person on a salary to go and check out the permit process. So that's why I see that the fee is justified for the amount of small staff that we do have, that wear many hats. So that's, like I say, that's my interpretation of why we have a fee versus a larger city. And also, the fact that we don't have livestock in the city, we don't allow goats, you know, we don't allow sheep, whatever, so I think being in a city limits is a little bit different than being in a rural part of the county. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, basically, it's a question as to whether or not you want to keep the ordinance as it stands, and from what I gather from everybody, that's exactly what you'd like to do. Is that correct?
Just for me.
It is for me as well.
Me three.
Well, we have three, let's see, I think if I'm not mistaken, Counselor Campbell, I'm not sure that I heard your response.
Thank you, Mayor. When I got my chicken permit, it was a pretty painless process. It did require a couple visits, if I recall correctly. But it went smoothly, I don't have a problem with the ordinance or the fee.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Madison?
Are we disagreeing to keep the same, or we approve our motion here to vote?
Well, I don't know that we have to vote on this, but basically, you know, it's, we're not making anything new. All we're doing is consenting to keep what we have on the record on the record, and I don't know that that requires a vote, I do not believe that it does so.
Okay. No, I agree, let's keep the way it is. I would love to have a discussion about the definition of livestock, to maybe put ducks as the health conditions permit some point.
All right, that's great. The Administrator's jotting it down as you speak. All right, we've got that taken care of. Let's move on. And we have a guest with us as well on this, this is the, on ordinance's resolution, this is resolution R-2021-09, excuse me, adopting mobile food unit, or MFU. That's kind of, that's kind of racy, isn't it?
Well, if mobile food unit is what the Oregon Health, the Florida Health...
I'm just looking at that inside the initials. I was thinking, that sounds like something Counselor Brennan would come up with.
Yeah, that's a state one.
Anyway, these are the permitting rules. So anyhow, has everybody had an opportunity to look at what we've got there?
Okay, I think Ms. Bennet from the Institute for Justice is joining us, and...
Now, Ms. Bennet, I appreciate you being here. I also appreciate what you wrote and describing the organization that you're affiliated with. Sounds like you guys are pretty up on the subject. So if you'd like to go ahead and address the council right now, I'd be more than willing and happy to hear you.
You're muted.
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Were you able to, were you able to hear me?
I apologize, I don't need it to take extra time.
Okay, good. Well, you're, you know, you're up, whatever you have to...
Sure. I'm so sorry, I had, Lucy's head goes on, because I was in the living room, and I didn't realize it would hurt you all, I apologize for that.
That's all right.
My name is Melanie, I'm from the Institute for Justice, we're a national nonprofit civil liberties law firm. We've been working in fencing-related issues for 20 years. I'm really here just in case you had any questions about the model ordinance that I sent over. And essentially, we're focused on making sure that burdensome regulations don't prevent people from opening businesses. Right now, as all of you are aware, it's really difficult for a lot of people... Right now, as all of you are aware, it's really difficult for a lot of people across the country. Mobile vending gives people the chance to start a business without having extraordinarily expensive brick-and-mortar expenses, and you get to test the recipes, you can test the market. So we just want to advocate on behalf of vendors that they're an excellent part of communities. They, they liven up communities when they're barren. They provide extra food options. They provide contact with delivery. And we just want to make sure that regulations that you pass, you know, consider their, their benefits to communities and things like that. So happy to ask and answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions from the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bennet, did you have a chance to look at the proposed resolution?
Yes, ma'am, and it actually looks very good. In the case that you had any questions, I did, I have it pulled up right here. It seems that you all are very respectful of vendors and realize that they were beneficial to the community. I didn't see any glaring things that I would advocate against. I know you were, there was a moratorium, so of course you would advise that that be listed as soon as possible so people can, can meet the needs. I'm trying to think if there weren't any crazy permit caps or anything from our experiences. Those are really bad. People can vend in most areas, which is good. And if you were nervous about, I know one of the things, some of the things brought up, fat, oil, grease, and all that stuff, that's under the Department of Health, and I understand you all aren't considering that right now, so. Any kind of nuisance things that you were wondering, I would, I would always advocate on the free of stomach. Let people vend, and then you have all sorts of ordinance on the books already to prevent them from parking in fire zones or ambulance zones or anything like that. But as it's written, it looks very good, but I'm happy to answer questions if there's something in particular that you would have questions about.
I think I was just, when I was writing it, I was mindful of the concerns that the institute had addressed in some of their other publications, so I tried to kind of steer clear of the sticky issues, so. Of course, the council is the one that's going to be deciding it. That's just my proposed one, so, but, okay. So counselors, go for it.
Well, what do you guys, what do you think about the, the rules or the resolution that we have and that we're, well, up for vote tonight? Is everybody satisfied with that?
I tried to...
I think the administrator did a fantastic job.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Brennan, always love to hear from you, sir.
I agree. I think she did a great job.
All right, Counsel Kaufman?
I only have one question. Again, I think she did a good job. Do we want to include the industrial zone, I think it's five I? I remember we discussed about, I don't remember what we agreed to.
It's, that's a good question, Counsel Kaufman, because after I sent out the packet, I actually thought, I actually thought that, I thought, did they say they wanted the industrial zone? We don't have a whole lot of the area that's zoned industrial, so I don't think it would be bad to include it. And I actually, I couldn't remember.
I was thinking now, like, by free memory or advanced tech, I think it's called, and the state police, all that's industrial. There's a little bit of industrial in the port. And that might be a good place for a food cart, even if it's just temporary. Most of our carts are permanent, but it would be, I, I think it might be worth adding.
Okay, so, okay, so that would be in item number four.
All right.
So should I make a motion to amend it, and then we'll know if we should do that?
Well, let's go ahead, and first of all, I want to find out, I don't know, we don't even really have to go through that. Yeah, let's have a motion to amend the resolution, and then we'll have a vote accepting it. Yes, ma'am?
Just real quickly, if anybody else had anything else they wanted to add, we could do that before that, if...
Well, we've got time for a discussion after the motion is made. So Counsel Kaufman, if you want to make a motion now, be brave.
I'll make a motion that we amend the resolution, Section 4, to include five I industrial zone.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there a second to that?
Sure. Sure again.
Motion has been made, seconded, I think, by Counsel Brennan.
Yes.
All right, good. And discussion. Anybody have anything that they would like to add to this at this time? All right, question, yes, ma'am?
So the resolution on number five, it talks about inspections, and maybe I haven't looked at it, but I'm, I'm curious, with all of the inspections in the health department, I know that's annual, maybe every six months, but fog and things like that, I noticed that it's based, like, I said I might have voted against it. How often is that? Is, are these fees annual? Is it a one-time only? Is it every time they relocate? Because I know that there's a permit fee. Could we consider the business license fee the same as well? And do we have a total average cost annually, the business cost of vendors to operate in the city limit?
The administrator will answer that.
That, that would be up to the council if you wanted to have, you know, we'd have to get, we have to adopt a fee for what this is, and I was just going to have it be either what the planning fee is, because that covers inspections, or have it be what the building, I mean, what the business license fee is. I would say what we have done in the past with the few that are there already is, once we've issued their business license, we haven't gone back out after that. They do have to renew their business license annually, but that, that's the same for any business. We don't, we don't single them out. And I would say that as far as the food cart, unless they move their permanent location, you know, if they're a transitory one, which so far we haven't had any of those, but if it were transitory, we would make that part of the permit. But the two that we currently have are in a permanent location. So once they were there, in my mind, their, their mobile food unit permit would be issued, and then they would just need to renew their business license annually. Now, if they move to a different location, a different lot that they wanted to set up there permanently, then I don't know that, I don't know that we would need to charge them again, but that would be up to the council. But I would look at it as, it's sort of like a conditional use permit. Once it's issued, it's issued. But then they, then they just have to go get their annual business license. Now, the health department, the county health department, I believe their fees are annual, so. And we kind of rely on them right now, because we don't have our own regulations. We kind of rely on them right now. If we have any issues, we usually contact them. But some things they cover and some things they don't. So, so that's up to the council. If you want it to be a one-time, like a conditional use permit, or you like it to be annually along with their business license, that's, that's up to you guys to decide.
Now, that could be a subject that we take up later. It does not have to be included within a resolution, and I, right?
If, if you wanted to make it where, where it was an annual fee or there was an annual inspection, maybe it would be good to put it in there and say this has to be renewed annually. But again, that's up to you guys if you want to do that.
All right, Counsel Madison, did, did the administrator answer your question to your satisfaction?
Quite clearly. I just have one addition to that, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Administrator, is there, is there a way that we could issue the initial permit fee? And would, would that be annual or just one time? I understood one time, correct?
That, that was kind of what I was envisioning, but then if you guys want something different, it's sort of like the, like the chicken permit, that's just a one-time fee. Once it's issued, it's issued. So that was, that was what I was envisioning.
So the fog per, the fog inspection kind of travels with you, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be respected because it's gone to a different location?
It does, but we consider that part of, once you're, once you're a utility customer, that kind of is part of what, what your fees go to. It's like the restaurants, we don't charge them a fog fee every year. But we often have to go out and do inspections, but that's just part of, now that you're a utility customer, that's just part of what you pay.
That's fair. So we're looking at a couple hundred dollars or so annually through the city, or what could potentially be a thousand or more?
You know, whatever you guys want the, want the mobile unit to be. But they do still have to pay the county for their health license. That's something totally different.
And the city license.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. And we do have a motion. It has been newly seconded.
Can I, can I just have one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just thought of something, like, right now, we just have one fee for business license, like, for any kind of business. But maybe, maybe for the mobile food units, it could be, like, it's $88 right now annually for a business license. So instead of making them get a mobile food unit license and a business license, maybe it would be a mobile food unit business license, and it would just be a different tier. That's something. But again, that's up to you guys to decide that. And that doesn't necessarily have to be here, that when we do our fee schedule, that you can think about that.
Yeah. Thank you. Once again, we have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Question?
Okay, I'm going to do roll, um...
We've got a vote going on, Ms. Ruff.
Right, I'm going to do roll call to make sure we get everybody...
Oh, okay, I got you.
Okay, so starting with Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. All right, with that resolution, or the amendment to the resolution, do we have a motion to pass the resolution that has amended?
I'll make that motion to approve Resolution R. 202-1-09 as amended.
Thank you, ma'am. Second?
Sure, I can help it again?
Counsel Pagano, I think has got that one. Discussion? Question?
Okay, I'm going to do roll call again.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, motion passed unanimously. Let's see, Ms. Ruff? Thank you very much. Do you have anything that you'd like to further say before we move on?
I just want to say thank you for having me. Thank you for considering an ordinance that is not overly burdensome. This will make a lot of difference for a lot of people if they so choose to open businesses like this. And we are happy to be a resource. This, the justice works across the country. We actually have an office not too far away in Washington State. So if there's any questions or any way we can be of assistance to you all, please feel free to reach out. We're happy to, to help any city council across the country, so.
Well, that's good.
And thank you. Sorry for the mic issue earlier. Everybody's Bluetooth headphones. They're the worst.
No, they don't. But thank you very much for being here with us, and...
The pleasure. Thank you.
What you've given us to look at. Truly appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
And continue the good work. Bye-bye. All righty, moving right along, we've got annexations for November council meeting. So in short, we're basically looking at a couple of annexations that the owners have asked for themselves. I'm assuming, Administrator, that this is just primarily for our, well, our notice right now so that we're familiar with it or know about it, or, in short, you aren't, we aren't expected to take any action?
No, I'm, the reason why I did this a little bit different than what I normally do on meetings is that it's, it's been 13 years since we had an annexation, and so I, I think, other than Counselor Kaufman, who was on the planning commission, I don't know that any of our counselors have been involved in an annexation. And so I just wanted to just kind of give you a heads up, and if you have any questions, annexations can be very complicated. This one actually is the least complicated because it's a voluntary annexation, and the folks involved want to do it. So there doesn't have to be an election. There, it's just, it's a fairly easy process. Next month, I will bring in ordinance to you and for you to go over. And I had a question this weekend about if they want to come into the city, why, you know, why does the council need to be, why is it necessary for the council to do something? And the answer is that when we annex properties, that actually changes the legal boundaries of the city. It changes the description of the city. So because you guys are the governing body, you have to basically bless that. And so the, this one's fairly easy because the parcels are all in the urban growth boundary, which means that's where the state wants people to be when they come into the city. So anyway, so if you had any questions about the annexation process, that, that was the only reason why I threw it out there. And I believe that Counselor Kaufman had a question. I wasn't sure. I, I think that Counselor Kaufman had a couple of questions, but that...
Counsel Kaufman, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I've never been a fan of cherry-stem annexations, and this is another cherry-stem that will have a cherry-splat. So I guess, I thought maybe the administrator might explain why it's important to do one. And you don't have to do it this month. You can do it next month when we look at the ordinance. And I was wondering if we wanted to offer the neighbors, if they wanted to jump in, this would be the easiest way to do that, if they wanted to also annex. And I didn't know if you'd already done that or not.
I, I had not, the two, we had, initially, it was just going to be our parcels, the, the water intake and the water treatment. And gentleman that's buying one of the properties came in to ask me some planning questions, and then he, then he actually brought it up and said, what would it take for me to annex into the city? And I said, well, actually, we're getting ready to do an annexation of our own parcels, so that would actually be a good time, because you are right next door. Well, then his neighbor came in and said the same thing. So when I spoke to Counselor Kaufman earlier today, when she talked about cherry-stem, that, that's exactly like it sounds. It's, it's not exactly right next to our city limits, but by state statute, you can use a road or even the river to connect parcels to the city limits. So that's what, that's what we would do. You can use waterways also. But we would, we would be going up Jerry's Flat Road to take those parcels in. We did that, in fact, one of the last annexations was Rogue Landing. That was annexed into the city in 2007. So the parcels between Motel Six and Rogue Landing are not in the city limits. When we annexed that in 2007, I did actually contact the parcels between the bridge, there's one parcel, two parcels on the north side of Jerry's Flat Road, and then Motel Six that are, that are already in the city limits. But the parcels from there to Rogue Landing were not. And so I did actually contact in writing each of those, those property owners. And at that time, it was a long time ago, admittedly, knowing they did not want to come in because they didn't want to pay city taxes. So, but this is quite a ways up there. It's actually the very end of our urban growth boundary. So I, you know, I will certainly do whatever the council wants me to do. I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of asking everybody from Motel Six to the mill whether they want to, because then that would be a very weird, usually they, you want them to be clustered or together. But I, I would think it would be worthwhile to contact the few parcels that are immediately adjacent to these two other parcels that had already asked, because that makes logical sense. But I, I think, so like, maybe the, maybe like 10 parcels from there to the old mill, we could contact them. But I don't know that we, I don't know that we want to go too much further down Jerry's Flat Road, because I don't want spot areas either, because then that's not logical. And that becomes an issue for... And that becomes an issue for law enforcement. You know, it's already, we already kind of have some issues with dispatch not, we have to relearn every time they hit a new dispatcher to let them know that Rogue Landing is in the city, but Indian Creek Campground is not in the city. So if you get too many of those isolated parcels, then it gets a little bit cumbersome. So, so if you guys would give me a little direction, I would be happy to like, say, maybe ten parcels downriver from these locations. But what, what do you think, Counselor Kaufman?
I'm flexible. It could be just, you know, letting people know what's happening in the paper or something.
All right. Counsel Brennan?
This is Counsel.
No, Counsel Brennan right now. Now get to you, Counsel Pagano.
For the Administrator, I understand what her concerns are as far as like this Oxfam-type situation that might end up happening along Jerry's Flat. I was under the mistaken impression that we already had cherry stem all the way out to the water plant. But from what I understand, your saying is that right now we end at the landing, and then from there on, that's what we were gonna do for the new park, right?
Well, we're just taking in our parcels to our parcels, and then the two adjacent. There's nothing else in between. We're not, we're not, we're not annexing the whole urban growth boundary.
No, I, no, I'm saying that cherry stem, I thought we already had that all the way out there, but we don't.
No, no, just to the landing. It stops there.
Okay. And so the new one is gonna increase that cherry stem up to the water plant, is that right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thanks. I would just, I would just try to get that understanding in my head.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel Pagano?
I don't know necessarily we need to ask any of the neighboring owners. If, if, if nobody's contacted us at all about it, I don't think it's a necessity for us to contact them about it.
All right, thank you, sir. Counsel Campbell, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
No, sir, I don't, but thank you for asking.
And she, Counsel Madison?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If, if it doesn't put Administrator first on the spot, if you were to consider putting that planning hat on for a moment, what would be the advantages to the city in annexing in this property or these properties? And my second question would be, what impact would that make on our law enforcement and the time designated that far upriver? And can we afford that, that time commitment from our law enforcement to claim?
You know, that's a good question, a law enforcement question particularly.
We actually currently cover our city parcels, so it's, that's not gonna change anything in that regard. When we purchased the other, we already did patrol the, the water treatment plant. But when we purchased the water intake two years ago, we included that. So our department had contacted the Sheriff's Office and said, you know, hey, we'll, we'll cover our city parcels up there so that you guys don't have to worry about that. So we already do do that. As far as the advantage, the city parcels, it has to do with our loan that we, the loan that we have with the state. And we are currently applying for a loan with the feds for the remainder of the 5.4 million project that we're working on. It, it just would be our preference to have it belong to us because then we're in charge of the planning and zoning and other issues related to that. So it just makes things easier for the city, and they own it, so there's no reason why. It's in our UGB, so there's no reason why we shouldn't. And then the two other parcels, the, the two other property owners that wanted to be in the city, to be quite honest, it's tax revenue for us. So that revenue will now come to the city. And they're pretty, they're two pretty sizable chunks. And the, the two property owners are aware, because that's one thing I told them. I said, you need to know that, you know, when you come into the city, that's gonna change your, your tax assessment. And they were both, they, they were fine with that. In fact, they, they wanted to be in the city because of that. So. So control for our own parcels and then just to be grasped money, tax.
Counsel Madison, uh, thank you, Administrator. Counselor Madison, did you have anything more? I don't know. Counsel Madison?
I'm sorry. Grateful for the input. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good, good questions.
Yeah, it was indeed. Counsel, you wanna go ahead and then let the Administrator continue on as she has directed the court so far? Let's start with.
Yeah, so, so next month, you'll see the, the actual ordinance. And then we will have to have, we have to have a public hearing to talk about what city zoning we would assign to those parcels. And so next month, you'll get that. This month was more just kind of a heads up and if anybody had any questions about the annexation process.
Is everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
All right. See everybody with thumbs up and a yes?
Okay.
All right, you're all set, Administrator. Okay, now our next is counselor concerns, and I'm not really too sure what that means.
Well, it, it was stuff that I didn't really wanna write a report on, but that I had been contacted about, so I just thought it would be easier. Counselor Kaufman had asked about the Beacon Broadband Project. And I did, I wasn't able to get ahold of anyone at Kus Curry on Friday because I forgot that they work four-tens. But the gentleman in charge of the project, who I believe is the general manager, I got ahold of him today, and he would like to make a short presentation to the council at the next meeting. I told him that was November 2nd. So he will be here to make that short presentation about what, what exactly that is, the project that they're working on. And I specifically said the, the question about the for-profit subsidiary of the nonprofit. So he will be here to answer those questions next month. And then Counsel Campbell brought up some concerns about the, the community garden at the park. And this is, again, this is a council decision. I just wanted to give you guys a little background that that wasn't the first garden that we've had. That wasn't the first garden that has gone fallow. Usually, we end up getting calls at the city about why are we not taking care of our garden? And we have to let people know that it's not really our garden. So Mr. Newdahl and I will do whatever you guys want us to do in regards to that. But it sounds like maybe the community garden people either don't have like a, a head person now, or I, I don't know. And I, I did have somebody say that they had a negative contact with the city, which is why they didn't wanna be involved anymore. And I'm, Will and I were kind of at a loss to figure out what, what exactly that negative contact was because we actually haven't talked to anybody at the garden like in, like over a year. So I'm not really sure what that was. So whatever you want us to do with the garden, we would be happy to do. But right now, yes, it does look kind of bad, and it is on our property. So I, you know, what do you guys want us to do?
It looked real bad, or kind of bad.
One minute, please.
Who's that?
Counselor Madison.
Yes, Counsel, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to hear from Counselor Campbell. As I've been doing some work on the parks myself with the intention of sort of a little more plan put together for next month's meeting. The city was kind enough to provide me with some very detailed files upon files of park history. And I just haven't gotten to all of those yet. About maybe a month or so ago, I reached out to the community garden Facebook page, touched base with Beth Barker Hidalgo and asked her, who was currently running that. And coincidentally, the gal that she had introduced us to a while back since she was taking over is no longer running it. And that's clear. I took a lot of pictures, and to be honest with you, I'm really embarrassed the way the community garden looks. And this is a prime example as why the city and the council might be hesitant or reluctant to support a project like that when there's, you know, short-term followers. And so there is another contact that I have reached out to, and she confirmed she was the new community garden leader. And I thought I should probably connect with the folks that were invested in the park in person, which I just finished last week before I brought anything to council as well. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to maybe partner with Counselor Campbell on that and see if we can't work together to bring something to the next council meeting.
I certainly don't have any objection. I think that was a splendid idea. Anybody else? Would you like to try in on this?
I would, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I was contacted, I'm trying to think of the date. Probably a week ago, a gentleman called City Hall and wanted to know about the availability of a garden plot in the community garden. He wanted to plant a fall harvest, you know, he wanted to do onions and garlic and, and stuff that you could plant now. And that's when I started reaching out to the community coordinator. I had also received a complaint about the grounds probably two or three weeks ago. I went down to the community garden over the weekend and put in the code that I had for the combo block, and I wasn't able to get into the community garden. It was looking bad enough that I was just gonna go in and flip the beds and get them ready. But I couldn't, I can't even get in now. I texted Counselor Madison to see if she had heard anything. But yeah, I just, I, I'm at a loss. Looks like we need to nominate or find another coordinator. But to answer the question, I'd be more than happy to work with Summer.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, no, that would be great. It's kind of a sticky thing now. I don't know. Did we have a list of, I'm assuming that we, we should have, a list of all of those who are partners within that gardener, I heard? We don't.
No, I, I went back and.
I haven't seen anybody out there since Beth, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I, I went back and looked at, we came up with, they came, they, I shouldn't say we. They, they came up with some rules to kind of govern themselves, and this was about three years ago.
Yeah.
Because the city didn't wanna be the one in charge of, like, like Counselor Campbell had said, somebody had called in and wanted to get a plot. Well, we didn't, we, we said that we'll offer the land, and we pay for the water, and then that's, that's our part. But, but Will had some concerns about, you know, people stop public works and, you know, kind of bark at them about why are they not cleaning that up? And so, you know, part of it's education that it's like, okay, we provide the space, but it's not a city function, so.
You know, one of the things that bothered me about it too, looking at it, was the potential of being a fire trap. I mean, that, that was all brown and very dry.
Yep.
And it would go up in no time at all. And so I was concerned about that. I don't know, you know, to me, it seems like we oughta just take basically the plot back. It's our land.
And we, and we've done that in the past. This is.
Yeah, well, we also, remember when they used to have the garden up by the Presbyterian place?
Yeah.
Too, that, that fell apart.
So Counselors Campbell and Madison, I'll, I'll send you this email from Will that had his concerns, and then you guys can, you know, take it from there.
Awesome. Yeah, this is Counselor Madison, and I agree, that would be great. I did have a gentleman reach out when probably two weeks after COVID hit, knowing his history and his skill set, was very interested in getting the community garden going. I didn't wanna step on toes because I knew there was somebody in charge and kind of leave those connections for him. But seeing as how there's been nothing done there in the past several, several months, this gentleman, after I contacted him about a month ago, said he's still very interested and is, is a pretty committed person in general. The other thing that I was thinking about is, you know, that, that, that community garden is really the first thing you see when you can park on the west side of the park and come in. And I, I really hope we can, can get that on a little more consistent schedule and commitment because that's a large piece of property that we could, you know, really do something more productive with.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Any other counselor concerns? All right, with that, then we're gonna go on to the city administrator's report.
Okay, so I need to, I haven't sent you guys a formal report in a while, and I need to email that to you. But the reason why we're meeting tonight instead of last week was because I needed to get the pre-audit stuff done to the auditors. They will be here the week of the 19th, so that's next week. They'll be here next week. They'll be here for about three days. I have been working on developing some HR stuff related to COVID because now OSHA is, I wanna say at the end of this month. They had temporary rules for the year, but now that it looks like we're gonna be living with this for a while, they've come up with some more permanent rules that I need to make sure that the city is, we're doing all the things that we're supposed to be doing in addition to what the insurance company wants us to do as far as risk management.
I don't have much to report right now outside, but I would just like to say happy birthday to our administrator.
Oh, I did not remember that myself. Actually, I think you have something else to report, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Summer.
If, if you would, please, I think that you were either nominated for or asked to apply for a nomination with the LOC Board of Directors. Is that correct?
That is correct, and thank you, Mayor. I didn't wanna put it out there so that next month I might get a position to say, I'm sorry, you guys, I didn't get it. But yes, I did submit my application, and I'm hoping that I can represent the city of Gold Beach at the capacity.
Well, thank you. I, yeah, well, to me, that goes without saying. But yeah, that's quite an honor. I remember when I spent two terms on the where you made Association Board of Directors. And it is an honor. It's, it's something that's important, and definitely be pulling for you all the way on that one. Counsel Brennan, you're welcome, ma'am. Counsel Brennan?
I have no comments, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Counsel Pagano?
Congratulations, Counsel Madison, on that. Hopefully, that feels great, and happy birthday, Administrator.
Thank you.
Counsel Campbell?
I would like to say exactly what Counselor Pagano just said.
Well, that, that cuts it down a bit. Good. We can go right along to Counselor Kaufman.
Tomorrow's the last day of registered vote. ballots go out on the 14th. This, we have one more meeting together before there's a change. Because, uh, maybe we should have a party for Counsel Brennan next month.
No party.
Actually, all we need is, all we need is a good beer and, and we can.
Well, that's it, yeah, yeah, we.
And I would say, uh, happy birthday to Administrator Fritz. A lot of you may not know, but she's technically the same age as I am for two months, and then she's all of a sudden a year older.
Boo.
And she reminds me every year that I'm older than her.
So that, what, which, what, fifty-two now?
And forty-seven.
Oh. Well, you'll be right along. I thought, I thought you were fifty. I thought you said.
I decided I was forty-seven a couple of years ago because nobody's gonna say they're forty-seven. because nobody's going to say they're 47, you know? They're going to say they're like 29 or whatever. And, and I think I can pull 47 off for a couple of years.
Yeah, for a little while, you betcha. All right, well, I've got a couple things. Number one, needless to say, last month was a disaster too because of the fire. So Wednesday, I'm scheduled to go to Bedford for that operation. I'll certainly hope this goes through, believe me. The other thing too is during the League of Oregon Women Voters or whatever it is, that panel discussion, or actually it was more of a, well, I hate to call it a debate because it wasn't really a debate at all. But Counselor Kaufman brought up something really good as far as I was concerned. And one of the things, and I thought I had addressed this on a couple different occasions, but I wanted to make sure again that each one of you understand the importance that you have as an individual on this council. You are not, you know, when I was a counselor, Lord knows that's been a long time ago now. But I knew I was important on that, on the council. And I knew at just, as a single counselor, I was important. I could put things on the agenda. Anytime that you have anything that you want to discuss and you want to put it, and you want to address it before the council as a whole, you put it on the agenda, that is your right. If you want to talk to anybody, that's your right. You're part of the governing board. So nevertheless, there are so many things that you have authority with and control with that, please, you know, do not think that, gee, I got to wait until two other people agree with me before I can do anything because that's not true. You can get things started, you can get things rolling. You can volunteer for things. If you want to go on a, on a trip that you think will help you, better do your job here for the city. By golly, go for it and do it. I just wanted to make that clear, and I wanted to thank Counselor Kaufman for bringing that up again. Actually, bringing it up first time with her, but for me, it was a reminder. So at any rate, I don't think, unless anybody has anything further to say, I think we can probably go ahead and end this meeting at this time. And I want to thank you all for your patience. I know this is a difficult way to hold a meeting. No, it's not the most conducive way, but you've all handled it so admirably, and I want to thank you so much. And once again, let you know how much I appreciate each and every one of you. I want to also thank Carl King. Wasn't much to photograph, just me. And occasionally, I think, you know, probably got better coverage when he panned on over to the administrator. But nevertheless, thank you all. And with that, the next regular scheduled city council meeting is Monday, November 2nd, at 6:30, and it is here. So with that, let's go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I knew it.
Seconded, sir.
A motion that's made by Counselor Brennan, and I think seconded by Counselor Pagano, is that it?
I, I think it was Counselor Campbell.
Oh, Counselor Campbell.
It was Ms. Campbell, too.
Yeah, all right.
And I'm not going to do a roll call, just...
Yeah.
And please say aye.
For that, all right, question?
Hi.
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 Good night, everybody, you guys have a good one.
Thank you.